Good evening, everyone. First, I'll start with, I'll make a motion to reconvene in open session at seven o'clock. Is there a second?
Second.
Dr. McGee, vote call.
Chairman Borje.
Yes.
Vice Chair Berg is absent this evening. Mrs. Capwell is absent this evening as well. Mrs. Nato.
Yes.
Mrs. Kapiskas.
Yes.
I'll make a motion to see what the closed session minutes of the August fourteenth, two thousand nineteen minutes called meeting. Is there a second?
Second.
Roll call on McGee.
Chairman Borje.
Yes.
Mrs. Nato.
Yes.
Mrs. Kapiskas.
Yes.
Would you please stand with me for a moment of silence and a pledge, please. I am the allegiance to the light of the United States of America and to your motherland, which is heaven, one nation, under God, indivisible, infinite and just as long. I would ask if anyone would like to address the school committee, please come to the podium, state your name and address the record.
My name is Romeo Berthel. I live in forty-seven Nature New Drive in Bucksbridge, Massachusetts. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen.
Good evening.
I was privileged to serve on the faculty of Wensack High School for thirty-five years, from nineteen sixty-nine to two thousand four. I was later honored to have served as chairman of the social studies department of the high school for the last ten years of my tenure. On March seventeenth, nineteen ninety-six, a ceremony attended by over two hundred persons was held at Wensack High School to dedicate a room which had been reserved for a collection of local historical documents and data. It was then known as the Wensack Room. On that day, it was rededicated to two veteran educators, the late Martin D. Crowley, Jr., and Miss Colleen Raymond H. Bacon. Crowley had recently passed away at the young age of sixty-three, but spent two years following his retirement. Thankfully, Ray Bacon is still with us today, he said this evening. In two thousand thirteen, Mr. Bacon was named Wensack's historian laureate by the Wensack City Council. Both men, along with a committee consisting largely of civic leaders here in Wensack, the late Alec Clyde Berg, then executive director of the Rhode Island Historical Society, who reached the end of planning a local museum for the city of Wensack. The plans became a reality when the Museum of Work and Culture opened in nineteen ninety-seven. Mr. Bacon served as its first director until his retirement in twenty thirteen. When the new Wensack High School opened its doors in nineteen seventy-two, at the suggestion of longtime educator Margaret McGee, it was decided to invent a course in Wensack history which proved to be extremely popular to students. As the course developed, it soon became apparent a repository would be needed to store the vast collection of local history. Documents, artifacts, tape interviews, photos, manuscripts, books on local history such as The Last History since famous eighteen seventy-six history of Wensack and Mayuri's one year's nineteen twenty history of Wensack's French Canadians are just a few examples of this vast collection. Three hundred and thirty of the famous lock and glance negatives taken by Charles Morton from the eighteen nineties to the nineteen twenties, which were donated to the high school by the city of Wensack's funding department in early nineteen seventies, prove to be a valuable product on the Victoria collection, along with thirty thousand slides which are produced in the year that's in the production of several local value visual histories of different aspects of Wensack's history. Now, these artifacts such as part of a gold post from the old St. Anne's Mall with the Will Levan's football games were thrown at Cass Avenue prior to the shift to Barry Ford in the late forties, as well as former Wensack owner Kevin Coleman's nameplate are just two examples of the several artifacts that were housed in this room. In addition to students, several scholars and researchers such as Richard Lane and Debbie Warhol and Rodney Bosil and Dr. Pierre Antill from the University of Ottawa in Canada, as well as local researchers and writers such as Robert Vellos, who made good use of the extensive slide collection for his work on images of America highlighting the city of Wensack, are just examples of several scholars who made use of the resources in the Crowley Bacon Room. You yourself, Mr. Chairman, utilize the resources of the rooms and you were researching a regular history before St. Anne's Parish towers of faith to tablet back in nineteen ninety. Wensack's St. Joseph's Parish also utilized many of the chairs and the room for the penetration of myth history, a community exhibit for life in nineteen seventy-eight. In nineteen seventy-six, the Wensack Room became a temporary studio for the writing and recording of the bicentennial minutes to commemorate the two-hundredth anniversary of our nation's life. These minutes were broadcast on both same radio stations throughout the year. In the late nineteen eighties, to commemorate the one-hundredth anniversary of the founding of the city of Wensack, the Centennial History of Wensack was published. The late Marcel Ford, a city resident, was the editor, assisted by Mrs. Colleen Bacon, the former high school principal, Ronald L. Kennedy. The Wensack Room again served as a valuable resource in the publication of this work. Several prominent local residents included longtime Wensack Historical Society president Phyllis Thomas, along with the late and David Reilly, Larry Boettles, and Nancy Hudson from the prominent family that originated the Wensack car, contributed to this activity. In nineteen ninety-four, Martin Crowley retired after serving the Wensack Education Department for thirty-eight years, knowing that the foundation had been laid and designed for the Wensack history course to continue for years to come. In late nineteen ninety-five, a proposal was made to rededicate the Wensack Room to the two veteran educators who head instituted the Wensack history course, Martin Crowley and Raymond Bacon. Originally planned for the ceremony was set for January of nineteen ninety-six. Unfortunately, Martin Crowley passed away just days before the planned ceremony, which was then rescheduled for St. Patrick's Day, with surprise, favor holiday. A portrait of Ben Crowley and Bacon, sketched by local artists and fellow faculty member Rue Dubois, was unveiled and hung on one of the walls of the newly named Crowley Bacon Room. In addition, portraits of four Wensack high school principals all over attendance that day were unveiled and also hung in the Crowley Bacon Room. They included Emily Chouquette, George Warren, Ed Schmo, Don Dumas, and John Katakow. Over two hundred persons, including former students, faculty, city officials, and friends and family members, attended the dedication, which was highlighted in the Wensack car. I have a copy of that article right here. As the years went on, the weight of Mr. class continued to be dropped on Wensack high school students. Unfortunately, in the mid-two thousands, cutbacks forced the class to eventually be eliminated, but the Crowley Bacon Room continued to be utilized as a valuable resource for researchers in the public large. Sadly, in June of this year, twenty nineteen, it was opportuately decided to eliminate the Crowley Bacon Room and move its contents to the Wensack Historical Society headquarters, located in the garden level of the Museum of Work and Culture. No one was consulted, no one was notified, no one was asked about the decision. It was simply executed. This, I believe, was an insult to both the Crowley family and to Ray Bacon and his family as well. And in fact, in both the Crowley and Bacon families, we deeply regret by this decision to eliminate the Crowley Bacon Room. I can only wonder if in the future, a similar decision would be made to eliminate the name Frank Emerson H. P., Wensack's premier superintendent of schools, from the building that serves as the central office of the Wensack Education Department, which is also ironically the name of the Wensack High School library. One institution we connect, Gavin Coleman School, named after one of the city's most eminent chief executives of the Savoy School, this Wensack named after one of Wensack's premier judges. I want the Greater Wensack Hall of Fame, which is housed in the main lobby of the high school, for thousands of viewers, they pass by the display each day. The Hall of Fame is located in an area where literally thousands of people, most of them students, crowd by, on a daily basis when school is in session, and on special events are held in the auditorium, or in the Severian Gym, named after one of Wensack High School's most successful athletes. I say shame on whoever made the decision to erase the Crowley Bacon Room and to move its contents to another site, where in all due respect, the Wensack Historical Society, which I am also a longtime and proud member of, very few people visit or even know where it's located. The location was perfect in that it was located in a place that was easily accessible to students, scholars, and researchers alike. To conclude, I am strongly urging the Wensack School Committee to seriously reconsider the decision to eliminate the Crowley Bacon Room from Wensack High School where it rightfully belongs. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to address the school committee?
George Lock, the chair of one-one-seven-five Diamond Hill Road, Wensack. I have three things. One, I know on your agenda is the hiring of people. One of them is Emily Chouquette-Mendillo, who I've known, she's been a baby, and I know she'll do a good job and give credit to the school system. The other is a former student, which I hope you're going to appoint, Angie Hope. Angie was my algebra-two student here at the high school. Now, I have two stories. When I was working here, the superintendent at the time was Dr. Anthony Daquiole. One summer, we had a rash of openings, and my caparso, Nancy Scambardo, and myself, we interviewed forty-five elementary teachers. That's a task I don't put on anyone. And most of them, believe it or not, were out of towners. And I said to Dr. Daquiole, I said, you know, I've got some extra money, we had something called Title V. I said, how about we give these new teachers a tour of Wensack, because since they were mostly elementary, they're not going to know what the different schools are or the community they are from. So the orientation was held here at the, it was held over at the old junior high. School bus picked them up, and Dr. Daquiole's job was to identify all the good restaurants in Wensack, and I was to do a little bit of the history of Wensack. So we left there and we toured the whole city, and I'm not going to go through everything, but, you know, they had to see Warren Heights, they had to see Social Street School, they had to go and see Buden Boulevard, they had to go see Barry Field, all the things that some of us, especially you people there, take for granted. We finished at the Museum of Work and Culture, and we're getting off the bus, and one of the middle school teachers, who I know the family well, thanked us and said, you know, I've lived in Wensack all my life, and I didn't realize where some of these places were. Now, that brings me to the Crowley Bacon Room. When I was working here, I had a chance to spend a class with one of the teachers of Wensack history. I was flabbergasted how little I really knew about the history of Wensack. That is important to our young people and some of the people that are here, to know what the history of the city is. In fact, I just had to look up something on the Garen Mills today, and I found out stuff about the Mills I had never known. I was deeply upset when I found out that everything was moved rather quickly from upstairs. In fact, I visited upstairs and went to talk to the clerk that was in there, and everything I knew that was in there was basically gone. The room had been raped, and everything had been removed, and I did not know where at the time. No one has given a plausible reason why. I had heard it was because of structural, and I'm saying to myself that if it was structural, they wouldn't really have to move the stuff, they'd just have to fix it. So my point is that we've taken something away from the students and possibly other research, researchers, because the Historical Society is open at a limited amount of time, where this is open five days a week. I would hope that the school committee would reconsider and return the material to the Wensack, to the Wensack Room upstairs on the third floor. I thank you, and Mr. Perrier, have a nice vacation.
Thank you, sir. Is there anyone else who would like to address the school committee? Dr. McGee, will go on to recognitions and announcements.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I recently received a letter from magistrate Angela Paulus, who is the magistrate that works with the Wensack Education Department, specifically the students and families who are Truanty and have poor attendance here in the district. And I'd like to share the contents of this letter with the school committee. I think this will show the committee and the community that our attendance program and the support that we provide our families and our students is working as we move forward here. It's dated July fifteenth, two thousand nineteen. Dear Dr. McGee, I write to share statistics of Rhode Island Family Court Truanty Program for two thousand eighteen, two thousand nineteen school year. My statistics include information from the students who entered the program, in whose cases I closed upon completion of one year in the Truanty Program. Unfortunately, although attendance officers filed other petitions against chronic truants, many children were referred to the formal calendar because even the parent, child, and both did not comply with the requirements of the Truanty Program. As you can see from my statistics, which she shared with me on page two, the children who completed the program greatly improved their attendance and grades. Attendance Chairman Roger Pickard was instrumental in the success of the program this year. He wore multiple hats, filling in for Andy Barnes, who retired. Mr. Lamro, Kevin Lamro, also assisted the court, and should be commended. I am pleased to hear that Mr. Barnes may be available to assist the school district next year. The guidance counselors at the middle school were present during every session. They too should be commended for their contribution to the success of the program. I look forward to working with you and your staff during the upcoming school year. Please feel, please feel free to share this letter with your staff and the school committee if you desire. So just some of the statistics that magistrate Paulus shared for me. For example, there was one student who was absent a hundred and eight out of a hundred and fifty-two days prior to his entrance to the Truanty Court. After the Truanty Court, he was absent two out of a hundred and eighty days. His grades dramatically increased from getting all Fs to two As and a B. Another student, prior to the court involvement, was absent twenty-seven out of ninety-seven days. Post-court involvement, was absent six out of a hundred and ten days, and two of those six days were actually excused days. That student went from failing almost everything to getting three As and a C. Another student was absent sixty-three out of a hundred and seventy-one days. Post-court involvement, was absent only twenty-three out of a hundred and sixty-eight days. So those are just some of the examples of the success that many of our students and our families are seeing as we re-entered the Truanty Court. Again, Truanty Court is not meant to be, you know, any type of situation where, you know, children are put in a situation where there's, you know, any situations where they receive anything other than good service from magistrate Paulus and this, as well as the counselors and administrators and teachers and attendance officers here in Wensack. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Dr. McGee. Any comments from anyone? I'll make a motion to receive and place on file the recognitions and the announcements. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Next, we'll go on to approval of minutes for the open session minutes for July seventeenth, two thousand nineteen. I'll make the motion in there a second.
Second.
Any changes or corrections?
No.
Dr. McGee, vote call.
Chairman Borje.
Yes.
Mrs. Nato.
Abstain.
Mrs. Kapiskas.
Yes.
Next, we'll go on to the consent agenda. Does anyone, any school committee member would like to take any item out of order?
Yes, Chairman, would be possible to take purchases and transfers, item number two, separately?
Sure. Okay. Mrs. Kapiskas.
Simply because I'm going to state that I have to abstain, but I would like to be able to vote on the personnel issues.
Okay, so we'll take the purchases out, so we'll vote on that separately?
Yes, please.
Okay, other than the purchases, I'll make a motion to accept the consent agenda. Is there a second?
Second.
Dr. McGee, vote call.
Chairman Borje.
Yes.
Mrs. Nato.
Yes.
Mrs. Kapiskas.
Yes.
Not for the purchases and transfers, are there any comments, questions about any of the items?
I don't have a specific question, I just need to abstain because I'm a member of the board.
Sure. Dr. McGee, vote call.
Chairman Borje.
Yes.
Mrs. Nato.
Yes.
Mrs. Kapiskas.
Abstain.
Communications. Dr. McGee, employee handbook.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. As the committee is aware, and the community is aware, we recently welcomed Ms. Mickey Fredericks to the Wensack Education Department as our new director of human resources and labor relations, and I've got to just say that she's only been here for about three weeks, and the amount of work that she has put in has been truly impressive, tackling issues that we've had in the district for over years. She's tackled them, she's spoken to people, she's met with people, she's collaborated with the all local directors, many of our administrators, and I just want to thank her formally for the hard work that she's put in to the Wensack Education Department over the last three weeks. One of the tasks that she's undertaken and impressively has completed is a Wensack Education Department employee handbook for the two thousand nineteen, two thousand twenty school year. You have that in your Chromebook and in your notes, and again, this was no small undertaking by Ms. Fredericks, but if you have any questions with respect to the handbook, she is here and I'm sure she will answer any questions you may have. This really is an opportunity for our, for our new staff coming into the district to familiarize themselves with policies, procedures, knowing who to go to, you know, with respect to administration and directors, and again, it's very impressive and it's something that we've been hoping to have created over the last handful of years, and again, she came in and just really took control, and as you can see, I think you'll do great, it's very, very impressive documentation with you.
Dr. McGee, will this handbook be given out to all the teachers before the year, or is it given out?
It is, so right now, we're in the process, have been in the process of hiring new employees, and as they come in and meet with the human resources staff, they receive, will be receiving this handbook. Those who have been appointed prior to your seeing this handbook will also receive a copy of this handbook.
Thank you, Dr. McGee. Anybody else? Next, we'll go on to school subcommittee reports. Facility Subcommittee actually met yesterday, and we have our facilities update that's coming up after this, so I'm going to ask our director, Mr. Montorianni, to cover both. Won't you do that? For the facilities.
So, thank you, Mr. Chairman. So, as we stated, we met yesterday, tried an update on facilities perspective, the Savoy Window Boiler and Entrance Project is running on time and on schedule. We anticipate that the windows, front entrance, and the new boiler will be in place for the start of school year with no issues. We also discussed the cothe drainage project. We have contractors on site looking at the drainage issues that we're experiencing between the playground and the PK wing at that elementary school. We currently have contractors working in the PK classrooms in the lower cothe here, getting the upgrades ready, so we have a client with the new building, PK, that would have been burned in that building. We have contractors that have assessed the average drainage issues from the back entrance where the playground is, and we anticipate having some work being performed there during the school year. The cothe administration building, as many was aware, we vacated the building earlier this year. Everyone's now been moved back into the building. It's up, it's been installed, and the system is up and running without any issues. And we are presently looking at our current HVAC vendor. I think just if we start in this position, it'd be wise for us to take a look at the HVAC vendor and get a second opinion as to what other vendors perceive may or may not be issues here in the district. So we're currently exploring that as a option as well. From a custodial update, some of cleaning projects are going well. Cleaning is progressing nicely, the building should be ready to open without an issue. I think they've been the cleanest I've seen in a long time, in the district for several years. And finally, transportation update, in terms of bus routes, we're currently looking at bus routes until the start of school year, making adjustments as necessary. Those will be published in the local newspapers next week, as we normally do. And this year, there's something new, students will be receiving bus passes so that they know where we're at. So all in all, facilities, custodial perspective, they're doing a great job, giving two thumbs up, you and I, some job in the district, and anticipate no issues with the start of school.
Thank you, Mr. Montorianni. The one thing I'd like to mention is that the library and the load refurbishment is going very well, and that's a combination of contributions by loads, by the road pick club, by DRL pocketing, and others. So that seems that that's going to be done within a week. I think on Saturday, the books are going to be brought back into the library and stacked with volunteers, several volunteers will be in on Saturday.
Yes, Chairman, I admitted, yes, that came along to look though library which is fantastic. And yes, they're going to be in this weekend.
Anyone else? I'll make a motion to receive and place on file the facilities update. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor? Aye. Next, we'll go on to the technology update, Mr. Montorianni.
So over the summer, we've done a lot of infrastructure updates, all the wireless access points throughout the buildings, which provide Wi-Fi or embedded access to all of our students' devices, were upgraded. We're currently upgrading the infrastructure, install switches at the elementary level. We provide the inventory of all devices here in the district, make sure our equipment's in place and ready for what we need it. At the high school, this is the launch year for the one-to-one initiative, so starting tomorrow night, this ninth grade orientation, inviting all parents, if you're listening, please come on out, you're going to hear a lot of great things about Wensack High School. You'll also receive your own Chromebook tomorrow. So that's something that's exciting to start in this year. And the last thing I'd take out, which is infrastructure, is the universal student ID. So I alluded to it earlier, our students are going to receive this year, and the student ID that will allow them to access the cafeteria software, library software, it will be their bus pass, and allow them to scan out of the various systems here in the district. So that's something new for them, and they will have that from their page book.
I would imagine all that is, all the ones that have been taken out?
Yes.
Because that would be a different situation as the students come in and try to use that ID.
Yes, we've tested it on all of our systems. In terms of state recording and data, the two thousand eighteen, two thousand nineteen teacher evaluations have been uploaded, and the year recordings have been completed. We will...
We go all over our data systems forward. Currently reviewing the configuration for the start of the school year. Staff and student counts are being created, and website updates have started, and those will continue until the next week and after start. That's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Any comments from the members of the committee? I'll make a motion, receive and place on file the technology update. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor? Aye. Next, I'll make a motion to discuss and improve the appointment of the Director of Curriculum and Development. Is there a second?
Second.
Dr. McGee?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I am extremely pleased to recommend Dr. Angela Holt for the position of Director of Curriculum and Development for the Watzaki Education Department. Dr. Holt comes to the Watzaki Education Department over six years administrative experience in education. Most recently, she has worked as the head of school at the Hope Academy, where she assumed responsibilities with evaluating educators, differentiated instruction practices, and strategic development, coordinated the consolidated resource plan submission, and the development of extended school year programming. Prior to her tenure at the Hope Academy, she worked for a combined total of fourteen years in the Watzaki Education Department as both principal, third-grade teacher, third-grade teacher, and was a graduate of Watzaki High School. In addition to her career in the Watzaki Education Department, she worked in the Department of Education as an induction coach after being selected of one of seventeen educators to participate in an innovative statewide teacher induction program. Dr. Holt earned her doctorate in Educational Leadership from Grand Canyon University and a license for school administration in Rhode Island. She's also earned a certificate of advanced graduate studies from Cambridge College in Educational Leadership and a master's degree in mathematics from Leslie University. Dr. Holt is a highly qualified Director of Curriculum per the Department of Education regulations. Based on Dr. Holt's education, work experience, and commitment to the students of Watzaki, I highly recommend her for the position of Director of Curriculum and Development in the Watzaki Education Department. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Dr. McGee. I can say that when Dr. Holt left the district, we were all sad. We wanted to change him to a classroom or to your school. Hope glad to see you come back, so I think it's exciting. Anything else? Dr. McGee, go call.
Chairman Borje.
Yes.
Mrs. Nato.
Yes.
Mrs. Kapiskas.
Yes.
Congratulations.
Mr. Chairman, if I could add something to my remarks?
Sure.
Welcome back, Angie. It's, I'm really looking forward to working with you. I think you are going to be a tremendous asset to our leadership team here in Watzaki, so welcome back to the web.
Thank you very much. Glad to be here.
Next, we'll go on to new business. First, I'll make a motion to discuss and approve bid twenty-one, custodial supplies. Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Perrier?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. What we have in front of you is a bid twenty-one, this is for custodial supplies for fiscal year twenty. Just bring everybody up to speed. Every year, this is part of a yearly bid where we go out and submit bids for various custodial supplies that we're going to need throughout the year. One thing I do have to say, this is the best turnout we've had for any bid in the five years I've been doing it. We've kind of seen more participation year over year, but we're up to, I think we had twenty participating vendors this time, and that's well up over the ten I think we just had a couple of years ago. So it seems that we're getting the word out there, and the bids are very competitive, so I'm very happy with how they turned out this year.
It seems like we've got quite a few vendors, certainly for this.
Absolutely, yeah. Twenty vendors, I think we had, like I said, I think we had ten just three years ago, so it's amazing what happens when you pay your bills.
Anyone have any comments on our supplies, on our bids? Dr. McGee, go call.
Chairman Borje.
Yes.
Mrs. Nato.
Yes.
Mrs. Kapiskas.
Yes.
Okay, you saw all of these. Next, I'll make a motion to discuss and approve bid twenty-two, medical supplies. Mr. Perrier?
Similar as the custodial supplies, we put out a bid for medical.
Yes.
I'm sorry.
Mr. Perrier?
Similar to the custodial supplies, we put out a bid for medical supplies for the district as well, their store, the nurse's office throughout the district.
In this case, we had fewer bidders, is that correct?
Yeah, that's correct. It's a little more specialized with the medical supplies, so still happy that we had the bidders that we had.
Any comments, thoughts? Dr. McGee, go call.
Chairman Borje.
Yes.
Mrs. Nato.
Yes.
Mrs. Kapiskas.
Yes.
I'll make a motion to discuss and approve bid twenty-three, high school serving hour. Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Perrier?
This is the on, my out. This is a bid that we needed to replace a serving counter at the high school that went broken last year that we wanted to replace. The funding for this will be coming from our nutrition fund. We built a surplus in there, so it's a fun base that we spent it to purchase a site.
Any comments? Dr. McGee, go call.
Chairman Borje.
Yes.
Mrs. Nato.
Yes.
Mrs. Kapiskas.
Yes.
Next, I'll make a motion to discuss and approve bid twenty-four, athletic supplies. Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Perrier?
Twenty-four athletic supplies, these are for the equipment that is needed for athletics for the upcoming fiscal year. The Mr. Iredondo reviews these bids, we work together to look at the bids, figure out what we need for the year coming up, and then we put together this presentation, and this is the award, the bids that we're going to award.
Mr. Perrier, does this include all the teams from Mills? Is this just for high school or middle school?
This is for all, anything and everything, all region across the entire district. We sum stuff everything here.
So that includes the new soccer team, I guess, that one that happened this year?
I believe we do have new uniforms for the upcoming year. Yes, I'm getting confirmation that we do. That's going to be on uniforms on twenty-oh-six.
Okay. Any thoughts? Dr. McGee?
Chairman Borje.
Yes.
Mrs. Nato.
Yes.
Mrs. Kapiskas.
Yes.
Next, I'll make a motion to discuss and approve bid twenty-five, athletic medical supplies. Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Perrier?
We split out the regular medical supplies and the athletic male supplies. Again, this is for just for the sports teams, and it's the medical supplies we need to get through the year.
Obviously, it must be a lot of work.
Yes, absolutely. If, and if we come short anywhere here, we end up putting the other purchase order and buying what we need to get through the year, but we actually reference these bids throughout the year, so if we go back, you know, six months, we try to reference the bid and see if we can obtain the same pricing.
And we should, you'd be showing us any delta in the difference between where we are and where we need to go?
Absolutely.
Any thoughts? Dr. McGee?
Chairman Borje.
Yes.
Mrs. Nato.
Yes.
Mrs. Kapiskas.
Yes.
And finally, I'll make a motion to discuss and approve bid twenty-six, athletic uniforms. Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Perrier?
Athletic uniforms, same process, pretty much five here. We bid them out, and these are the bids that we got in.
Any thoughts? Dr. McGee?
Chairman Borje.
Yes.
Mrs. Nato.
Yes.
Mrs. Kapiskas.
Yes.
Will someone confirm it before tonight?
Not tonight.
I'll entertain a motion to adjourn at seven thirty-nine.
Motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor? Aye. We are adjourned.